Good evening, good afternoon, I guess, still. Not used to that one. Welcome to our special city council meeting on Tuesday, April 23 here at 5:30. Thanks for being here this evening. Clerk will begin tonight by reading our role, please.
Councilmembers Erickson, here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Present.
Staley.
Here.
Recky.
Here.
If you'll please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, which is approval of our regular agenda tonight.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second Selberg.
All right, motion approved by Erickson and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, council? Okay, vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Before moving on to the agenda items, I want to point out that per the city council's policies and procedures adopted by resolution on June 19, 2018, quote, "During a special meeting of the city council, public input will only be allowed for the agenda item after the staff presentation, but before city council discussion and voting. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes. So, please keep comments relevant to the item under consideration." So with that being said, we'll move on to item number three.
Item three is approval of contracts agreements on the April 19, 2019 memo.
Councilors, is there a motion on that item?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second Kylie.
All right, motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Is there any discussion on that? All right, vote, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed eight to zero. We'll move on to item four.
Item four is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to acquire homes in flood-prone areas in proximity to Tomar Park.
Afternoon, TJ.
Good afternoon, TJ Nelson, Mayor's Office. Good afternoon, council. Bringing you the second reading of our proposal to start a voluntary buyout program for the homes impacted by the flooding in March in the Rose Lotta neighborhood. So just to recap of what we discussed last week, this is a long-term voluntary purchase program. We're asking today for a million dollars from the 2018 surplus funds that Director Pritchett just presented not too long ago. Subsequent years, we would ask for budget dollars in the CIP budget to go to the parkland acquisition budget as well. And then, once we have this area bought out for green space, we would add this to Tomar Park. Again, just to recap, you saw this slide a few moments ago from the finance update. Million dollars for this, the 1.2 for the triage prep, and then 1.8 for street, and then we'll have a remaining balance of a little over $500,000. So, why purchase these homes? Long-term private structures at this elevation will continue to be exposed to flood threats. Numerous times, we've had to build temporary berms and dikes in this area to help prevent the Sioux River to expand out of its banks and threaten this area. We did that again this last March when we were under threat of flooding, yet with the flash flooding from that first storm, I believe on the 14th, a lot of those homes were impacted from the river waters while as water making its way to the river. A lot of those homeowners were devastated. They have a lot of damage to their homes, and some are unable to invest in repairs even with their flood insurance. Levy system in this area would be drastically more expensive. It would also be very time-consuming and take several years for FEMA and the Corps of Engineers to even design permit and model, and we believe that this would be the more prudent way to go. FEMA regulations also make it very costly for homeowners to elevate their homes above the flood basin. So our purchase process, we'll go through, and this is what we'll use to prioritize the homes. If you, this is not meant to be, you have to meet all seven of these criteria to be considered because we want that entire area, in the Rose Lotta area, but this is going to how we're going to prioritize which homes to start with. Hundred-year flood plain, currently uninhabitable and below the flood basin. We've heard from several of those homeowners already who meet even just those top three, and we feel that this million dollars is enough to cover those folks. Questions came up last time on the pre-event market value versus the post-flood. As Regan Smith presented earlier, the declaration period has not even ended yet. It closes tomorrow for the state. Once that closes, we'll submit our information, and then it goes to the federal government for them to approve that. So we don't have FEMA funds available to help supplement this program at this time, but we're going to follow their guidelines for their programs so that if those funds become available and we can utilize them, we are consistent. And FEMA's guidelines do go by the pre-event fair market value, and they also discount any insurance payouts from the FEMA funds that would have been paid to that person so you're not double-dipping into those FEMA dollars. So the next steps would be council approval tonight. We'll assess those properties. We've been able to contact several of those interested sellers already. We'll conduct flood plain surveys to see where the base elevation is. And then, we'll conduct independent appraisals and begin the purchase of the homes as soon as possible. If everything lines up, those could be even as early as June, but very early summer is our target. And then, we'll budget for future years for folks who did not have as much damage and have homes that they can continue to live in. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
All right, thanks, TJ. Before that, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public here that wishes to speak on this item this afternoon. Good eat, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynette Ron. I live on Rose Street in an area that was not damaged. I did briefly talk last week. I forgot to say thank you, of course, to the mayor, all of you council members, the firefighters, police, everyone that really has helped out in this time of need. I am in favor of this, even though, like I said, I was not damaged. Our homes were built there before the flood zone was ever a flood zone, before FEMA had ever determined that. During the 13 years that I've lived in my home, my flood zone has changed multiple times. It's changed three times. And I know that there's certain requirements that FEMA and the city both have, but I just want to reiterate what was just said a little bit ago about the pre-flood value versus the post-flood value because that is so super-important. It sets the stage for those of us that did not flood, and, you know, it would be unfair for everyone, in my opinion. Anyway, there are so many additional expenses that people have gone through that, you know, they've missed work, they've had moving expenses, they've had storage for their items that did not flood, so it's not going to be a windfall for them. I just want to make sure that, you know, if we use this pre-flood value, it really is truly not a windfall for anyone. You know, they've had to eat out because their furnace, you know, their food was completely destroyed in the refrigerator. They've lost contents that are absolutely not covered by flood insurance. Their washer and dryer, if it's in the basement, it's not covered. So it's just super-important that we use the pre-flood value. And then, another thing is, like, for me, I personally spent about $30,000 in my home in the last year where it required, of course, building permits, so a lot of this can be substantiated. So if we went pre-flood value versus post-flood, it just would be completely unfair, in my opinion. The other, last part that I really want to bring up is the homes that are on the south side of Lotta are not in this buyout. And so, right now, if it floods, the homes on Rose, each one of the basements will fill up there first, and then some of the Lotta ones will fill up first. But if we don't have those homes, we need to have some kind of protection for those people that are remaining, that are not part of this buyout. Some kind of tanks, like we talked about last week, that would fill up underground, maybe, however, so that those homes don't get destroyed too because they are low-lying. Anyway, that is really what I wanted to say about, you know, what we have going and what to think about in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynette. Good afternoon.
Good morning, Mayor, council. My name is Pastor Al Parat, Senior. I'm a chaplain with five different organizations, and I just moved into the Rose Street area over 26 years ago. And I'm a transplanted San Diegan, so it's been quite a challenge just every year to live here, in one thing. But we said that block reminded of us of the "Leave it to Beaver, Father Knows Best" era, and it was a beautiful area, still is, and, you know, I just wanted to put a face to it and say that for those of us that were transplanted here, we're not even like, some of these folks have lived there for years and years. And when I moved there, I didn't have to pay flood insurance at first, and then all of a sudden, here came this flood insurance thing, and being a dutiful, productive member of society today, I am a recovering drug addict alcoholic, I paid that flood insurance. I paid it faithfully every year, and I know that some, it really hurt them to be able to have to pay this over and over and over. And so, some of the comments that I've read on Facebook are really hurtful to think that, you know, that we want a handout, when in fact, all we want, and as I help other people, whether they're from the penitentiary or whether they're from the treatment centers, they just want to hand up. And that's what we want, is we just want a fair shake. And so, being also a retired member of the United States Army, Vietnam, Cold War vet, I've served my country honorably, and I would just ask that Sioux Falls has always been good to me and my family. I ask that this be a consideration where you show us fairness and that you think about our hearts, what we put into this place. A lot of these people put their whole lives into their places. I have neighbors that are still etching out, living there right now. I wanted to end with something. I'm not going to get too preachy here, but I am going to end with Proverbs 3:27, and it goes like this. "Do not withhold good from those whom good is due when it is in your power to act." Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pastor Al. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Scott. Harrisman Sioux Falls. Well, I think it's a good idea that we give this money to help these people. I have a, I started thinking about some of the things that Counselor Janet Recky talks about with strategic planning. And are we going to just continue to go down this path where every time we have a neighborhood that floods, we're going to have to appropriate money? Or are we going to put together a strategic plan to figure this out? Also, the funding is something else. These people have paid flood insurance. The last gentleman just talked about that. Well, that's paid to the federal government, as I understand it, or maybe the state. Maybe I'm wrong. So shouldn't we be getting some money from them to help them pay for these homes? Just an idea. The other thing is, is that a combination of how we have blacktopped this city over the past 20 years, I've lived here since 1991, and we've decided to blacktop the city, which has caused immense drainage issue problems, immense runoff problems, and has turned our city into a virtual pancake. And if you think that we had some flooding issues right now, we're going to have a lot more. And on top of that, global warming scientist, and it does exist, it's not a hoax, let's get over that, 99.9% of scientists agree, that as this continues to get worse and worse, these rains are going to get worse, the storms are going to get worse, the flooding's going to get worse. They gave us a timeline. They gave us 12 years before the effects of global warming we have to save ourselves. I don't think we're going to reach the goal, to tell you the truth. But we had the head of the Public Assurance Alliance here yesterday, and what did he talk about? He talked about what the Public Assurance Alliance does, what they insure, and he said over the past five years, there's been enormous hailstorms and hail damage. Well, that is because of global warming and climate change. And as we go down this path, while it's a good idea to give these people this money now, this city council and the county and the other agencies involved need to have a long-term plan as to what are we going to do as the town continues to flood because we turned it into a pancake. We can't change what we did in the past. That's too late. It's unfortunate, but that's what we did. And now, we want to try to turn a swamp out on 85th into another pancake area where it would probably just flood too. So are we going to do, let's do a plan here, put together a plan of how we're going to handle these and notify these neighborhoods in advance? Hey, four, five years down the road, we have you in a potential area that may flood. What do you want to do about it? Do you want to build your house up? I remember a couple months ago, someone from the planning department came up here, I can't remember who the person was, and they were asked about what was the best way to build a house in Sioux Falls so that you don't have your basement flood. And the guy from the planning department said, "Slab on grade." In other words, no basement. So that's the advice from our planning department. No more basements in this town. That tells you right there what kind of water issues we're having. So I'm encouraging you, approve this supplement, try to get some federal money, because in reality, these people have paid the federal government flood insurance, we should really get that money back for them, and put together a plan of how we're going to continue to deal with global warming and the fact that our rains are just not normal rains, our snowstorms are just not normal snowstorms anymore, and how are we going to deal with the fact that we have a pancake city that we created over the past 20 years? Let's face it. Let's fix it.
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon.
My name's Todd Jones. I live down on Rose Street. I got the south wall, my basement lane in the basement. I just want you to know that we all got our own scenarios here. When I bought this house down on Rose, I'm getting close to retirement, I put 50% down on this home to buy it. I have the paperwork to prove it. So if you're going to buy me out and I don't have 50% to put down on another home, you are making me worse than I am now. So you need to approve this money. You're not, we're not bartering over buying cows and horses here. This is our homes, this is our lives. I'm probably the newest kid on the block, but I have to speak for these people. It just ain't right if you try to lowball us. You know, my house, bought it for 85.5, put half down on it, it appraised for 88, it appreciated to 93. That's what I believe I should get for my home, so I can buy a new home, put 50% down on it, and start my life just like I am now. I shouldn't go back in time. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Good afternoon.
Jim Stanga. I'm for these guys getting their money for their houses. They should get what they paid for them, and that way, at least they get out of their loans that they have against the property. About assessing property, don't we have a county that does that? They do that every two, three years, they come and assess your properties for taxes? Why can't we just utilize that instead of paying somebody to come out and appraise houses? Can't we just use the county to do that? Because we pay them anyway. So that's something that we can utilize, is the county to appraise property. The other thing is, we say that we put up a temporary dike. Temporary dike is only so good until the water backs up into the streets and comes through the curb and gutter. That's part of the problem here, is when the water comes through and it backs up, and it backs up, there's no place for that water to go. Big part of this flood came from that. And the sad part about it is, when we redid the levees, that took a few years. Why didn't we look at building the levees all the way around the city? Or why didn't we do approach that we went all the way around the city versus just where we went and we stopped? You know, when you come up here and you got city council people that badmouth you because you bring up something about digging a hole or putting something down to, like Edison Junior High or out on Marion Road, they just sort of criticize you. Or they say, "Well, how long does it take to get a levee built?" The sad part about it is, we started a long time ago with the levee. We could have kept going, but we didn't for one reason, and I don't know what the reason was. You know, we knew about the ash borer 15 years ago, but yet now, since we got the ash borer, now, whoo, we got to start cutting trees now. We could have been cutting trees down for 15 years, and we could have had trees at 15 years old. But it always seems like when it comes down to, with something happening, now, it's got to be done right now. There's no second, you know. We got to look a little bit further. We don't have, really and truthfully, sitting here listening to everything, there is no plan to where if this happens again, it's not going to backflow into this neighborhood. It's not going to help this neighborhood one bit. And I'm hoping we think about it a little bit further.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input on this topic? All right, councilors, do you have questions for TJ? I know there's several city employees here who have all played a part in this process. Questions for Counselor Starr?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Nelson. I guess, I said this last week, and I'm still kind of there, so I guess maybe to rephrase one of the questions that I asked last week. How much of this million dollars is actually going to go towards paying for property? And how much, actually, if you could pull that slide back up that you had of the pre, actually, I think it was the second to the last or the last one?
This one?
Nope, the one that has the things, the next steps. There we go. How much of this million dollars is going to go to assessing properties, the flood plain survey, the independent appraisals of the property before we begin buying houses?
That might be a better question for Director Cotter.
Maybe Director Cotter's the other way.
Good afternoon, Mark Cotter with the Office of Public Works. I would say the vast majority, the survey that we're going to do in the neighborhood to establish the base flood elevation is just under 15,000. We have a contract appraisers on retainer already, and so, because we're constantly buying either parcels of projects to widen roads and/or for a similar project like this, so the appraisal cost per structure will be very similar to what a bank charges, which I would expect will be between $500 and $700. Those costs will absorb as well, and then the normal transactions to actually close a property, title insurance and closing costs. So when you look at the percentage per structure, it's going to be a very small amount of funds that are not going to buy real property.
Thanks, Mark. Other questions for either TJ or Mark or any city staff? Counselor Knightzert?
TJ, can you clarify? We are looking at appraised values pre-flood, is what we're talking about.
Correct. So, yeah, these independent appraisals, they'll go in, they'll look at comparables in the area, they'll, you know, assessed value versus market value, this probably 130% of assessed value is kind of the benchmark. So they'll be looking at comparables for the area and finding those costs as if that person was to list their home on the market and sell it.
Okay, and regarding if somebody has flood insurance and they're going to get a payout, for example, if they get $20,000, would there be a $20,000 deductible so between the two of their made whole?
Those are the FEMA guidelines that we would follow.
Okay. And the citizen testimony was very compelling, and I also would point out that I think it's also in the public, even though sometimes you may struggle with paying more than what something is worth, in this particular case, if we can make them whole and make it easier so that they can get out, whereas if we were to give them only partial funding, maybe they become upside, maybe they're upside down on a mortgage, they can't pay off a mortgage, now they can't move. There's all kinds of scenarios that could happen where they feel like they have to try to fix their house and they're stuck. So I think then, in the public interest, this is a way to go so that we can essentially incentivize them and help them so that they can make that next step. So, thanks.
Thanks, counselor. Counselor Starr?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind of follow up on the, one of the questions from the public, why wouldn't we use the appraised value from the county? We spend hours in the Board of Equalization trying to explain to people that we'd buy their house for what it's appraised for, and people are like, when they offer to us that it's over-appraised for taxes and things. So have we reached out to the county to use their assessors and include them in this process?
We have not. We are looking for a consistent process, and our consistent process, when we're acquiring land for right-of-way or water wells or the Cobal Lake neighborhood, for example, we go by the market value, which is a higher value than the assessed value. It'd be more comparable to if you were to list your home today and come to agreement with another seller or another buyer.
Struggle with that, saying that the county's not at market value. I mean, they tell us they are as part of the Board of Equalization process, so, I mean, that's exactly where we're headed. They may be a little low in this area, I think they would tell you that, but it would be at least a way to get an estimate and get us going in the right direction, but that's my.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't think that's a bad question from Counselor Starr, but I do think that most of the time, and as we have found out through that process, is a lot of times they're kind of given that 85%, 80 to 85 to 90, so I don't know if that necessarily would be something these folks would be happy with going just with that either. I don't know, but not a bad question at all. My question is, I think I asked this last week, and just remind me of the answer. So this, these funds that we're approving tonight, this is getting the people that are in the most dire straits?
Correct.
Something?
Correct.
So there won't be people kind of hanging there yet, right now, have nothing and are...
Correct. With the citizens and interested buyers that we've talked with so far and had a chance to assess and get feedback from them on the condition of their home and kind of going by that 130% of assessed value, we feel that the million dollars is sufficient at this time to get the people in the most dire straits a resolution yet this year.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson?
I just have a follow-up question. Lynette had a great point that as she's not in, in right now, she didn't get the water. We start removing all those homes, the water, there's nothing stopping it from just running right into her house. Is there anything, a temporary berm, something that's going to protect the homes further in so we don't lose everything? If we can move some of these homes and save some of these affordable homes to other areas, if that's an option, I think that we should strive for that instead of just, here comes the water again and it just takes out their basements.
Right, and we will continue to protect that area as there are still homes there. So we are, we are not, if we have another flood incident that we have to prepare for like this March next year, for instance, we're not going to neglect that neighborhood. We're going to continue to protect them as long as there are residents in that area.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. Well, first of all, first of all, I'm in favor of this proposal, and I think the $1 million is just going to be a start, as we had discussed before. And we have surplus funds to cover that initial start. We even have some remaining available fund balance of $550,000 that was identified, so we've got an option there. We even have an option with our reserves as well, too. Our reserves are for this type of an emergency situation, and we're currently at 31% with our reserves, and while we try to maintain it at 25%. And, you know, I would encourage us to maybe take a look at that in the future, too, depending upon the demand, because after all, the money in the reserve is taxpayer dollars, and it shouldn't just sit in an account. I've always felt that it should be out there working for the citizens. And so that would be yet another option for us, depending upon the demand. The unfortunate thing is, is we're, we're just discussing, when, when you hear the terms making them whole, we're just discussing the house and the property. Unfortunately, these individuals have lost thousands of dollars in, in, in their own personal items and merchandise. And so this is just going to be a help to get them started anew, hopefully, a fresh start. But I don't know that it's ever gonna get them to where they were prior to, to the flood. So once again, I would encourage my colleagues to support this this evening.
Thanks, councillor. Any other discussion, council, on this? I'd look for a motion on it.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg. All right. Do we have any discussion just amongst the council body here? Councillor Sale?
Let me get very brief. Last week, I talked about the difference between important and urgent. And the urgent is now we're gonna allocate this money to move the process forward. The important part, I've discussed with Director Cotter and with TJ and even the attorneys, to make sure the process is followed. There are FEMA rules that will have to be followed. There are city rules that will be followed. So the compassionate part of it, I would hope that all the homeowners don't get, their emotions let them over, they can't overrun the policies that FEMA sets down and the city sets down. So the compassionate part is we're going to allocate this money because it's urgent. The important part, the rules will be followed. Rest assured, they will be followed. We will watch that. So I would urge my colleagues to vote in the affirmative on this motion.
Thanks, councillor. Any other discussion, council? All right, I'll call for a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item five.
Item five is a resolution amending the 2019-2023 capital program to add funding to CIP 14008 slash Park land acquisition to acquire homes in flood-prone areas in proximity to Tamar Park.
Sean, maybe you could speak to this. I think this will just memorialize what we just voted on, but...
Correct. So this is just kind of a logistical issue that we need to amend the capital improvement plan with this particular item. So with the appropriation, this will match to, to allow that CIP to be amended with it as well.
Sorry, he was on vacation last week and we didn't connect on that one, so thank you. Any questions for Sean on this? Can I get a motion on it, please? Okay, move to approve by Kylie?
Second, Erickson.
Seconded by Erickson. Any discussion, council? Okay, a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
Selberg? Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item number six.
Item six is a motion to appoint Shannon Nelson as the internal audit manager.
Councillor Knightser, floor is yours.
Thank you. This is an exciting night. Tonight is a culmination of a process that has taken almost a year. With a vacancy in our internal audit manager position in the summer of 2018, we found ourselves at a crossroads. While it was difficult, it presented us an opportunity to take a fresh look at the internal audit function so that we can make the necessary structural and organizational improvements. It was lengthy and difficult, but those changes have been put in place. In fact, it took so long that some questioned why we hadn't yet moved forward to hire a new internal audit manager. Over the last several months, we have created a clear and deliberate process to hire our audit staff. That process was communicated to the city council on many occasions. That process was very intentional in creating more input and involvement of the entire council in the hiring process, which had not been the case in previous hires. It included specific steps and timelines that have been followed. For the first time, the entire council has been empowered to hire our internal audit staff, which was not the case always in the past. Some may be surprised to learn that the last internal audit manager was not actually appointed by the city council. With the unanimous adoption of a new ordinance that clearly set forth the mission, powers, and the duties of internal audit recently, we were finally ready to embark on the search for our next internal audit manager. A hiring panel was assembled that included three city councillors and one citizen member of our audit committee. Following the process, the committee sat down and collaborated to create the set of questions we would ask the candidates. Throughout the process, I updated the entire city council, sending out weekly audit division updates, something never done before, and other emails and updates as necessary. We advertised the position internally and externally. We advertised on local and national industry publications. The posting was open for three weeks, as had been agreed and communicated. We had a number of applications submitted. The process included the opportunity for all city councillors to review all of the applications submitted. In addition, the process included the opportunity for the city council to decide who would be interviewed. Ultimately, after consulting council colleagues, we interviewed three qualified candidates. Once a recommended candidate was identified, the process included the opportunity for the entire city council to meet and ask questions of the candidate, as well as the opportunity to meet the candidate individually if they so desired before council action took place. I am pleased to announce that the hiring panel has unanimously recommended to the city council that we appoint Shawna Nelson to be our next internal audit manager. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank the members of that panel for their active service and dedication to this process. The panel was composed of myself, citizen member of the audit committee Rose Grant, councillor Sale, and councillor Starr. The hiring panel felt that her financial expertise, her impressive resume, her character and integrity, her inquisitiveness, her incredible analytical skills, her vision for the department, her curiosity to get out and get her hands dirty by getting into operations out in the field, her proven track record of scrutinizing city budgets and holding city staff accountable, and her passion to ensure tax dollars are used prudently and are protected clearly set her apart from the other candidates. In addition, the panel felt strongly that her city employment was an asset because she brings with her an institutional knowledge of the city, its operations, its financial system, something that would take someone outside of the city literally years to gain. She will literally hit the ground running. The professional and constructive relationship she has built with city management and staff will allow internal audit to be more effective and visible. These are the attributes we want and we need in an internal audit manager. Mr. Mayor, would it be possible for Ms. Nelson to come up to introduce herself to the citizens of Sioux Falls?
Absolutely, you bet.
Thank you.
I'll say good evening now because it's six oh five, so good evening, Shawna.
Good evening. I'm Shawna Nelson. I am currently a business analyst for the City of Sioux Falls. In my role, I scrutinize and evaluate budgets as well as operations to ensure taxpayer dollars are used efficiently. I believe my passion for improving processes and analyzing data will have an even greater success in the internal audit manager position. I believe with my institutional knowledge and professional relationships, I will serve the citizens of Sioux Falls well. I am honored for this opportunity and excited to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. All right. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item this evening? Good evening.
Scott Harris, Sioux Falls. First of all, I want to say that that was the first time I had heard any biographical information from this body about Ms. Mrs. Nelson. I was told by several people that she was asked to take the job last week, early, I don't know what day, but it took all the way to Friday at three thirty for her to be put on this agenda for a special meeting. Why? If you click on that agenda item, there's no biographical information. There's no information there for the public to know who the council is voting on tonight. So a councillor was forced to do a robocall. Wasn't her fault that it was Easter. Whoever decided to put that on the agenda knew it was Easter weekend, knew that the public wouldn't have to see any of this. I can't understand why we didn't get any, at least a week or two for the public to vet this person. It's annoying. On top of that, with all this great experience and someone who, and I believe it, I, I believe that resume totally, I've heard it from a lot of people, and someone who won an award from the last mayor, why would this administration let such a great employee go? If I was the mayor and I had someone this good working in my administration, I would take her aside and I would say, Mrs. Nelson, I want you to stay here with me or this administration, and I will give you a raise because you have the power to do that. But we heard nothing. Apparently, the administration doesn't care that such a great and valuable employee is moving over to the city council. Kind of surprises me. And lastly, I want to say this isn't about people enjoying their Easter weekends or hurt feelings, or council members hurt feelings, or city employees hurt feelings, or anybody else's hurt feelings. Protecting the taxpayers' money is about the taxpayer. It is about us who fund the government. And when we talk about an internal auditor, we need someone with the highest integrity that's gonna look for things. And you can't have that kind of conflict of interest of someone coming from the administration side over to the city council side and to be a watchdog of the administration. If she applied for this job working in the private sector, I'd be the first one up here going, hire her. But that's not the case. She has been working for the city in the financial department, and, and according to the night I watched the video when she won her award, she set up the whole software for the whole entire financial system. The internal auditor job is not a job that tries to find things that are wrong and then try to smooth it out. Their job is to try to find fraud, and they have to have a clear mind. They, they can't have any conflicts. They can't have a spouse who works, you know, in another department. That's a conflict. And it's nothing against her character, her experience, or anything else. And I know a lot of people have been trying to make it of that. But I keep telling you, this is about our money and our money being protected. Millions of dollars, cities lose millions of dollars all across the country because they don't have good internal auditors, they don't have good auditors, they don't have good checks and balances, and they don't have people who can come from the outside and look in. The other thing that was said is, if any of these conflicts come up, well, we'll just hire outside internal auditors. What's the point? What's the point of bringing someone who's gonna have a conflict if you have to hire an outside internal auditor? Doesn't make any sense to me. Somebody said, well, it's certain departments she'll have conflicts with. She has a conflict with every city department. She worked in the financial department. They overlook all of the departments, people. That's an entire conflict. Like I said, this is not about somebody's character or whether they're a good employee. This is about our money and having someone who is from the outside with no conflicts. It's really that simple. It's, it's not about all this other stuff. And I still am curious why we couldn't tell the public, why we couldn't have a week or two weeks and vote on this in May to tell the public who she was. That's unfortunate.
Thank you.
Good evening, councillor.
Good evening.
Grant Tohman, 1510 South Phillipson Avenue, Sioux Falls. Here to just kind of reiterate some issues. I think councillor Knightser did an outstanding job paraphrasing how I would describe Mrs. Nelson. Outstanding person. I, in, in listening this evening, I can, I had, my ex-wife was actually in an internal auditor, auditor for actually Glattery in Poland. And it's not unusual, actually, for businesses that have a auditor to come in and end up hiring that individual. So that, that is actually consistent in the private sector. So I just kind of want to throw that out there. I just, in listening to that, I, I heard that because I, I know a lot of businesses that end up hiring their CPAs or hiring the accountant that's in their firm or, you know, the other side, which is audit. There's two, tax and audit are the two sides of, of accounting institution. And that's not, it's not unusual. But as it relates to, to Mrs. Nelson's character, I, I've spent the last three or four seasons in soccer tournaments. I've spent evenings, you know, having a beer with her. She's an outstanding person, honest, ethical. I think she was an outstanding choice. I think hitting the ball out of the field when you're looking at somebody to get somebody into the, into the game that's already been in the game and understands all the rules of the game. It, it just gets her in a, in a capacity to take that job and run with it incredibly quick. And, and in, in dealing with her in, in different situations, I just think you've made an outstanding choice. It might be a small loss for the city, but it's a bigger gain for the city, I think, as the overall looking over the budget issues. So I appreciate your time and I would strongly recommend a vote for her. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Good evening.
Good evening, Ruth Danielson. Tonight's meetings and vote is about process and leadership. Tonight's vote is contrary to our desire for a functional, open government policies. We see voting, but very little leadership. Most of us agree with the statement issued today in a press release, this is a shameful, disappointing display of city leadership. This is not leadership or policymaking. It's childish sandbox time. During the December 12, 2017 Fullon Camp Award presentation, Mayor Huthier gave us reasons Shawna Nelson should not be hired tonight. It's too bad this issue has got, got jammed into tonight's agenda. Everyone needs to review the video. Important reasons why she should stay in the finance department were stated. She appears to be an amazing city employee, but as an administration insider with too much knowledge, including conflicts, she will not be able to do a proper job as internal audit manager. You would have to audit her own work. She would have to recuse herself from almost all the work brought before her due to her conflicts. This is not our only concern. We citizens have concerns in the council's direction. This council was never intended to be a childish winner-takes-all body to the detriment of the city, and now you place an employee in the middle of your game. This is a place to have views considered and discussed. This is supposed to be a policymaking body, a political body, and designed to be a political forum. We hire you to listen to our many voices offering different views without prejudice. If you feel otherwise, there's a door there, 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 and please leave now. Because you have to be willing to listen to us and work with us because we're part of the process. We help open government candidates. We work to prevent perceived backroom dealings, stopping speakers here or at any venue from being part of some secret something. We shouldn't expect to be harassed or have our teeth broken just for asking questions. In September 2015, I was approached and asked to help a person run for this body. We had many conversations making sure the fit was right. Commitments were made, including promises of fair hearings on issues, responsiveness, and enhanced governmental processes and openness. So training began. Materials were designed, foot soldiers lined up, and a computer program was designed to help this quiet person run for office. This person announced for the Northwest District, promising city government sunlight. The 2016 election victory brought short-lived promises. Hopes for this new perspective was lost when a coalition enhanced the childish winner-takes-all mentality. This hiring is a casualty of this childishness, no matter the outcome. Many voters in the Northwest District are now disappointed. We never demanded our member vote a certain way, only to keep communication open. We are disappointed. We ask officials for specific information and we get stuff we didn't ask for. We want our calls answered and not blocked. We ask for emails to be acknowledged and not blocked or ignored. You are not here for a point of view, but for your open mind to listen. As I tried to say at yesterday's audit committee between the on-call for interruptions, citizens know of problems. We need people with insatiable curiosity and no preconceived agendas, ready to ask impertinent questions while searching for real answers. Again, can this person legally audit her own work? We also ask this body to respect our citizenship. We have concerns about this vote tonight based on childish behavior, winning over possible ethical lapses and concerns. It is a shame this body is sacrificing the integrity of Shawna Nelson, no matter how this body votes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Liz Mylenberg is my name, been in this city since 1974. This is an absolute no-brainer if councillors are using common sense and first and foremost concerned about protecting taxpayer funds. Questions for considering when selecting a candidate or an auditor-manager job should be? be: Is this candidate certified as an auditor? That's important. Is this candidate an auditor but not certified? And if so, why? Did this candidate receive official auditor training from a qualified institution? Is this candidate without problematic relationships involving departments to be audited? The answers to these questions are all the same: No. And in clarification of the last question, I believe that the candidate is married to a head of the department. We do not choose a candidate because they're nice, or that we like them, or that they've done a great job in their current position. We choose a candidate first because they are most... First and foremost qualified, and especially a candidate for manager of an audit department. Let me ask you another set of comparable questions. Would we choose to hire someone to represent our city as an attorney who's not past the state bar? Would we choose to hire someone to represent our city as an attorney who did not attend and graduate from law school, but had worked in a law office? Would we choose to hire someone to represent our city as an attorney because we liked them, and they're nice, and they performed well in their past job in a law office? If you vote for this unqualified auditor... Non-auditor candidate as our auditor-manager, but would not vote to hire an unqualified non-attorney to represent the city, something is drastically wrong. You cannot rationally justify two such opposing decisions, lowering the standards for one, but not the other. Please use your common sense. Choose only a candidate who abundantly meets all the qualifications, because the voting public is watching to see if you place them first and foremost, and are trying to protect them, and they're hard earned taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Jane Hanneman, and I've been a resident of Sioux Falls for about 38 years. And I have known Shauna Nelson for the past seven years. And I'm here tonight to actually read a letter from a friend of mine who wrote this and was unable to be here tonight, but thought it was important that you know these things about Shauna. Dear Sioux Falls City Council Members, I had planned to speak on behalf of Shauna Nelson at tonight's city council meeting, but a family event is keeping me from doing so. Instead, I will write my words to you. Most people are not as lucky as I am. Those of you who know my story might think I'm crazy for saying that. I lost my husband, who was 33 at the time, to a heart attack six and a half years ago. My daughter Peyton was six and in the same class as Shauna and Matt Nelson's daughter. I didn't know Shauna well at the time, but the next thing I knew, Shauna and I were doing a lot of things together. We took trips with the girls, went to events around town. Shauna helped me take my mind off of my reality and was there for me more than anyone else. She ended up being my rock when I needed someone the most. I would not have made it to where I am today without her, and truthfully, I would not have met the man I am with today if it weren't for her. She helped complete my little family. Her friendship has meant more to me than almost anything. These past six and a half years have been rocky times. Several years ago, Shauna was diagnosed with melanoma cancer. She went through an entire year of treatment, lost so much weight, lost some of her hair, and went from being this outgoing, energetic, always-on-the-go person to being someone who could barely get out of bed because of the pain she was in. But she did. She got out of bed, and went to work, and did everything that was expected of her. That takes determination and love of the job. Thankfully, she has fully recovered and is back to that spunky self. I'm not sure that many of us could have done what she did during this time. We would like to think that we could have, but in reality, many of us are just not that strong mentally, emotionally, and physically. One thing I've appreciated most about Shauna is that she tells it like it is. There's no sugar-coating anything for her. She will call you out, make you take responsibility, and make you man up or put on your big-girl pants, regardless of who you are. That's just who she is. She is honest, and she expects the same in return. To think that she would do otherwise in this position is absurd. She takes everything she does seriously, and she would be no different as internal audit manager. I'm so proud of Shauna. She has seen her world turned upside down and fought right back to get where she is today. She's handled the name-calling and other negative talk throughout this ordeal better than anyone could. She has had her name drug through the mud, when the truth is, it's by people who really don't know her. They have no right to assume what she might do in this position. People are not hired based on what they might or might not do. They're hired based on what they have been doing, and how well they have been doing that in their current position. The Shauna I know and love makes this city a better place, makes the people around her better, and makes me a better person. I truly hope you will give Shauna this opportunity. You won't be disappointed. Sincerely, Mayor Colter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Hi, I'm Jenny Howman. I'm a good friend of Shauna's. I've known her for four years. Our daughters are in soccer together. We've done many six-hour drives, trips, spent entire weekends together. Soccer's year-round, so we've been doing that for a long time, spent a lot of time together. And I just want to say, I'm disappointed by some of these sort of hypothetical problems that may have, conflicts of interest. I think it's interesting to debate and talk about, but you can't prove that that is going to affect any of the decisions that she is going to make in the job. I think what should hold more weight is, based on her experience, people who know her well. Obviously, she comes with great recommendations from the city. I think that they will help her to get up and running quicker, will make her more uniquely qualified than other people that could come in from other positions. If you read the job description, there was no requirement for the person to be a certified auditor. You know, that was preferred, but it wasn't necessary. She meets and exceeds all the requirements of the job position, and I know that she would do an amazing job.
Thank you, Jenny. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Becky McElroy, and I am a business owner here in Sioux Falls. And I am here to represent Shauna Nelson and talk about her character. As a business owner who employs employees in this city and goes through the process of hiring, I do know the processes and the complexities that this involves. And that finding that right individual possesses... And that possesses appropriate values and skills for that position you desire is critical to the success of this organization that you run. So after all the due diligence is done, and the interviews are completed, and it truly comes down to trust. Can you trust the individual that you're looking to hire? And that's the battle we face in the hiring process. I've known Shauna for over seven years. I've come to know her as a person of strong integrity. Shauna is authentic and honest in her communication. While she stands for what she believes in, she values and respects others, their opinions, and their views. Shauna is also a curious person who continues to grow and learn new things and challenges herself every day. When faced with adversities, she looks for others for guidance and inspiration, and she uses that to guide her decisions beyond what her education and her knowledge base provides her. Shauna has faced many challenges in her life and has always found a way to stay true to herself and rise above the challenges to become a stronger and more resilient person. Shauna faces those challenges with integrity and determination and do what is right for the greater good and not the select few. She places concerns for others above herself, even when facing extreme difficulties on her own. Shauna has a humble strength about her that is both inspiring and desirable. She is confident, but by no means arrogant. She is someone that I trust wholeheartedly. She has served both our country and our city with integrity, dedication, honesty, and respect. And she will take that integrity, dedication, honesty, and respect into the role of internal audit manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Good evening.
Good evening, Janelle Kane. In no way do I want this to reflect as anything personal against you, Mrs. Nelson, not whatsoever. But I'm speaking about the job itself and my long history of audits, and a family coming from audit. My uncle is a retired federal audit bank examiner. My sister's a certified CPA auditor of conglomerate elevators in South Texas. She does feedlots and cotton gins. And I come from a property management, real estate background, where we keep trust accounts on rental trusts and security deposit trusts and paperwork for every financially-layered property that we have for every individual ownership entity. In each of those cases, everyone has to have an outside auditor come in, a new set of eyes that look at it. If, myself, I deal with accounts receivable, accounts payable, collection of rent, evictions, the legal problems, the collections, literally against ATF, FBI, immigration, personally evicted MS-13 gang when they said to leave them in place for two more months, wouldn't do it. So I do everything, but every year, I have to go through a special audit for the tax credits on a property, a special audit from the state for being able to make sure they're in compliance, a special audit from HUD out of Denver to make sure we're meeting all of their guidelines. And then the membership or the ownership entity asks for an outside audit when they get a reconciliation and a P and L every month. So you need a new set of eyes that look on it from a different perspective. Now, I'm sure she's done a wonderful job and everything is fine, but there is a conflict here. As she's worked with these departments, she's put in the software... There are so many times when I have got bank statements, and the security to a trust account is three cents given to me in interest. It is against state law for us to accumulate interest as a third member-management party. I have to go to the bank and say, "You have to take these three cents off of my account." Well, no, just, it's three cents. We don't want to worry about it. Just write it off on your general journal. Cannot do that, because when the external audits come in from the South Dakota Real Estate Commission, they're going to say, "You're not allowed to do this. It's not legal." When everybody else, including my accountant, that I pay, if I can't figure it out, $75 an hour or two, because I'm off three cents, and maybe it's just because I'm dyslexic and flip the numbers, says the same thing. And I'm like, "Nope, we got to find it," because there's external audits, and there's checks and balances and consequences. Now, I've done this for over 27 years. In the last two months, I find myself with the last of my clients that have been faithful to me since the 1990s and early 2000s, in their mid-90s, selling their properties. So I've been looking for a job for the last two months, after being almost 28 years self-employed. Those just don't fall out of the sky, because they call people like myself that have been self-employed a little hard to manage, if you can imagine. So being in the price range that I'm in, I have applied for many accountant-assistant jobs, because I do not hold a CPA. I can qualify as a bookkeeper, but in each and every one of those job descriptions, they specifically put into their description if that person needs to have audit experience or not. And you have to know how to audit, because every situation is different, and you can't overlook it, you can't just write it off. There has to be checks and balances and answers. And my sister and my uncle have found multi-millions of dollars that have been overlooked because of people that are embezzling, that have been in the same place, or have gotten away with it from the previous people that they worked with. So please keep that in mind as a conflict of interest in her job. Send her to Ida Bailey, let her be an auditor for five years, and bring her back. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Janelle. Anyone else this evening for public input? All right, Councilor Nitscher?
Mr. Mayor, it would be my honor to make the motion to appoint Shauna Nelson as our next internal audit manager.
Second, Sale. Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Nitscher for that, and seconded by Councilor Sale. Councilor Nitscher?
I'd like to tell you more about this impressive candidate. Shauna received her undergraduate degree in accounting at Colorado Technical University Sioux Falls in 2009. She completed her master's degree in business administration at the University of Sioux Falls in 2011. She lives here in Sioux Falls with her husband, Matt. They have one child, their daughter, Mackenzie. Shauna is an Army veteran. She served an overseas tour in Germany, supporting missions in Macedonia, Kosovo, and Bosnia. She has a background in accounting, budgeting, regulatory compliance, and business process improvement. She brings a wealth of internal and external experience to the internal audit division. She serves as a budget analyst for the largest division in the city, Public Works, which includes streets, fleet, storm drainage, water, water wreck, landfill, and electric light. She also currently is serving as a budget analyst for fire. She helped build the city's financial system, Munis. Knowledge of that system, our auditors will tell you, is absolutely vital. A knowledge that extensive is a huge asset to the internal audit division. In 2017, she was awarded the Gene Follenkamp Management Excellence Award for her performance and leadership. Those who nominated her from the Public Works Department called her a game-changer for the city. She is known to be tough and bold. She isn't afraid to walk into a director's office, something others might find intimidating. She has ruffled a few feathers on occasion. She wants to understand what she is analyzing, so she has gone out in the field proactively to understand operations, another vital skill for internal audit. She was selected to serve on the core transit team because her peers see her as a visionary. Prior to her service to the city of Sioux Falls, she was a senior accountant for Salmon's Financial Group from 2009 to 2012, ensuring statutory and GAAP compliance in preparation for annual audits for assets totaling nearly $40 billion. Over her career, she has worked in numerous accounting roles. She has simultaneously built professional relationships with city staff, earned their trust and respect, but at the same time, has pushed them and held them accountable. She discovered a major issue in a department and brought it to her management. She didn't look the other way. That action led to important changes in city operations that will protect tax dollars going forward, and led to employee termination, including someone she knew well. She scrutinizes budgets, proactively analyzes, looks for efficiencies, and spends time in the field learning operations, all key attributes for internal audit. She is ready to take the next step, and everyone who knows her agrees wholeheartedly. I believe her unique skill set is perfect for this job. With her character, institutional knowledge, proven track record, and respect of management, I believe she can take our internal audit division to the next level and make it more relevant and impactful. I'm also excited about her vision of where she wants to take internal audit. Finally, perhaps the most important attributes you want in an internal audit manager is integrity, ethics, and character. You can't teach those. In Shauna, we have those in spades. We are incredibly lucky to have had her apply. I would urge your approval of this incredibly talented individual as our next internal audit manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Nitscher. Councilor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would maybe raise a question for our city attorney. Kind of with the background of, you know, those of us that run for city council obviously do so, knowing that there might be some times or situations that arise when we might have a conflict of interest, and we may have to step aside. And I don't think that that has ever dissuaded anybody for running, nor should it. When we talk about something to that effect with this subject, where the conflict of interest issue has come up a couple times, and it's been made clear by the nominee that should the situation arise, she will, right away, take the step of recusing herself. I bring this up maybe with... For you to clarify, for those of us here and those of us watching, tell us a little bit about, let's say that she does, she's already stated publicly many a times that she would recuse herself should the need arise. How would that necessarily work? And tell us about maybe a couple of other safeguards that are in place right now that try to protect us from some of the things some people are trying to say are a danger here. And tell us about maybe a couple of other safeguards that are in place right now that try to protect us from some of the things some people are trying to say are a danger here. I believe there are some things built into the way we have this set up where, to protect us from, I guess, the downside of what we're hearing.
Well, to begin with, if she's hired, she has to comply with our code of ordinances. So, the conflict of interest provisions under Chapter 35, she'd have to abide by those. So, she's ever involved in a situation where she might get financial incentives or have a financial interest in any action, unlike the general public, she would have to recuse herself or at least notify whoever she's working for of that potential financial interest. And then her supervisor or the committee could determine whether she should continue on with that task or not. In addition to those conflict of interest requirements that she has to abide by pursuant to our ordinances, she has to comply with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing of the Institute of Internal Auditors. She also has to comply with the Code of Ethics of the Institute of Internal Auditors. And those requirements are far more stiffer or stringent than our own code of ordinances. Right now, it's not against the law or prohibited to have a spouse as a city employee to be also employed with the city. That's just by law in the city of Sioux Falls, not a conflict of interest. It might not look good to some people. It might appear to be odd, but it's just absolutely not a conflict of interest. So, safeguards that are in place, you know, the city council determines what's going to be audited on a yearly basis based on a recommendation that comes from the audit committee, okay? The city council, when they determine what's going to be audited for the coming year, they can determine that we're not going to audit internally anything that they think might be a conflict for Shawna. You know, the parking department, they might say, "Because of that relationship and the look, we're just not going to assign her. We're going to outsource all that stuff." Okay? And that's not unlikely. I mean, and that's not something that the city hasn't been recommended before to do. There's been, see, may our audits that have come back and said, "When you have big construction projects and you're looking at billing and invoices, it might be a good idea to go outsource that and get a specialist in audit management or a specialist in that audit area." So, that's not unheard of, and quite frankly, that's been recommended to this council. And I think it's, you know, it's adopted that in the recommendation. The other thing you can do is, if you determine that you want to do an in-house audit, then you just mandate in your resolution when you approve the plan that she's not going to be involved in that process at all. Require her to recuse herself, which means she's no longer participating in that action. She's not there to consult. She's not there to review. She's not there to present. She more or less has to put a firewall between her and whoever's working on that so she can't see in and they can't see into her. So, she can't have contact. You can do that. You could also just set parameters. If you are so inclined to have her audit something that you think might be a potential issue, as the audit committee in the city council, because she's your employee, you can set up policies and procedures that she has to comply with in addition to these various standards that I've indicated. So, there's things you can do, certainly safeguards you can put in place.
Okay, and we are in charge of those rules and safeguards.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of what I was looking for in that. That's, I really wanted that covered for people that are listening and have been hearing about this for some days and the arguments that have been made because I think it's been covered and I think that the safeguards are there where it will be taken care of when it is, if and when it comes up. I would just add to the nominee, I want to just thank you for your service to the city and thank you for your service to your country. And thank you for hanging in there and putting yourself out there for this position, even going through a few days of rough waters. They say politics is a contact sport sometimes, and I think you're finding that out. But, I don't know, in my eyes, I see an outstanding resume, an outstanding track record. I think you're going to carry that forward and lead this department well. So, I'm completely behind you. I would also throw out a thank you to the audit committee for going through this thorough process, and it has been a thorough process. And I know there's been a lot of time and effort. And thank the counselor who's led that effort too for the last year, I think spent pretty much full-time in this department. And there's nothing that gets pushed through or shoved through quickly when he does something. I think we all know that. So, I think things have been pretty thoroughly addressed, and I'm comfortable with this. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, some of what has already been said, I'll touch on very briefly, and then I have additional remarks. But again, Shawna's undergraduate degree is in accounting, and then she has a master's degree in business administration. She was, we've discussed this, or it's been discussed, she was awarded the Jeanie Fulencamp Management Excellent Award for her performance and leadership, and that was by the city of Sioux Falls. She was a senior accountant for Salmon's Financial Group, and she has worked in numerous other accounting roles. And she has served in the U.S. Army with overseas tours, and for that, your service, I thank you very much. I've had the opportunity to meet with Shawna since the recommendation was brought forward. I've been impressed with her knowledge of what is expected of her in the future. I had the opportunity to discuss her abilities actually with a former employer. Just, it just happened by pure accident where the individual had indicated to me that she had worked for him previously and reiterated everything that we've heard tonight about her abilities, her effectiveness, and her efficiencies. I was recently involved in a hiring process where the candidate stated, "Judge my future performance based on my past performance." Boy, that really spoke volumes to me of that particular individual, and it wasn't Shawna. But, when I think of Shawna, I think of that experience with that candidate. I truly believe that her past performance is a very good indication of her future performance. In my opinion, Shawna is the best candidate for our internal audit manager position since we first began this process of looking for internal audit managers, beginning in the last quarter of 2016 when Rich Oxl announced his retirement. This is actually the third time we've been down this road in the last two and a half years in terms of going through this interviewing process and hiring an internal manager, internal audit manager. And in my opinion, she by far is the best candidate that has come forward through that period of time. I strongly feel Shawna is the right person for the job, and I'm certain she has, will end this two and a half-year process where our internal audit manager position has been in flux, and she's going to bring us a qualified internal audit manager for the long term. I encourage my colleagues to support Shawna's nomination. Thank you.
Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to clear up a few misconceptions I believe are out there. I hold in my hand a letter from Idy Bailey, Independent Auditor's Report. So, the books are audited by Idy Bailey for the city of Sioux Falls. So, this is not the only audit that will be going through, the internal auditor. So, some people say, "My books always get audited. My books always get audited." Here's the report. It's dated March 29th. So, our books have been audited once. Secondly, when it comes to a conflict of interest that we've talked about, and the city attorney, Danny Brown, has laid it out very well, and Counselor Breckley and I know from our past experience in city hall, there's redundancies and redundancies in the ordinance and civil service and things like that. Recently, we had a fire chief who was supervising his brother and two of his uncles. He was appointed to that position not once, but twice to be fire chief. There was no outrage. There was no scandal. So, the fact that we might hire an internal auditor whose husband works for the city, I don't see that as an issue with all of the things we have going on. As a matter of fact, I believe it's a subtle form of discrimination to say that you can't get a job because of what your husband does. It'd be like saying to a young man, "You're not going to make the baseball team because I don't like the position your father holds." That's not fair. And that's one of the things that has disturbed me about this whole conversation. I think we're overlooking the fact we might be discriminated against somebody because of what their family does, and that's not right. That's why we all strive to be Americans so we can reach our highest potential no matter where we come from. My last point would be about the audit committee's work that I was enjoyable to be part of. As we interviewed people, she rose to the top. The character, the past work she has, the recommendations from people that she has, even the people that she's called out inside of city hall for things that might not have been done right. There was a question earlier about why she would leave city government to come to work for the council, and that was asked of her by Counselor Starr during our communications. And in a nutshell, she likes a challenge. It's not a huge pay raise. It's actually a lot less security than what she has today, but she's up for a challenge. She wants to read her fullest potential. So, I'm excited for this. I think it's a step forward for us, and I would also encourage my colleagues to vote affirmative for Shawna. Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Counselor Nitzer. You've done, I would bet, hundreds of hours of research of bringing the audit department back around to where we can respect the work and move the office forward, and I do appreciate that because I know that I didn't step up to help to be part of that, and I do appreciate the amount of time. One of the things, though, that you did say in your opening statement is that, sorry, I went in a different direction here, I apologize. But one of the things that, you know, we talk about is that, we've talked about this for the last year. You have been very diligent at sending out weekly reports of what's going on in the office. You did a great job of bringing back the former auditor from retirement to get us through this time until we do fill the office. But what we didn't do is, we didn't bring the public with us as part of that process. We didn't send out a news release with the bio of the person that we nominated. We didn't bring the public along. We waited till the very last minute to make the announcement when the agenda came out last week on a holiday weekend that it would slide through. That doesn't bode well for openness and transparency, and we're at fault for that. I would have expected a bio on the agenda tonight of the person that we would nominate. One of the toughest parts of serving on the city council is that we do have access to information that the public doesn't, whether that's executive sessions, opinions from the city attorney's office that are stamped confidential and attorney-client privilege. We do have information from directors and things that we can't share. So, there are things we can't share tonight. But the one that we can share is that we have determined there is a conflict. We've said it, I think Attorney Brown said it very clearly, that anything that has to do with a spouse's department isn't going to be audited by this candidate and would have to recuse themselves. That's kind of the definition of a conflict. I don't know how much clearer it could be. I am also, like Counselor Sale, very proud to be on this committee. When we started the interview process, we knew we weren't going to get the perfect candidate. The perfect candidate for, you know, we celebrated that this weekend, and that was probably the last perfect person that has been on this earth. So, not letting the perfect get in the way of good, I was comfortable with. I was comfortable at looking at candidates who didn't have audit experience but could grow into that. I was comfortable working with people who wanted to excel and get the additional training that's required to do this job successfully. I was willing to work with someone who wanted, that may not have managed people in the past or have any experience managing people. I was good looking past that, knowing that the candidates that we interviewed would take that on and learn and grow. I was comfortable finding candidates who have a great character and are great people. We had those as part of this process. But when we get to the final decision and moving this forward, there's a cloud that's going to hang over this process. There's a conflict that is very clear. You know, the other places, how do you audit previous, your own previous work that you've done for the last five to seven years? It makes it really difficult to look back on what you did and the things that you put in place. So, with that, I'm going to probably hold off and make a final statement when we're all done, but for that reason, that's why and where I'm at after the selection process.
Counselor Erickson?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Question for Counselor Starr. If you were so passionate about a bio and the resume being sent, did you suggest that as being part of the process?
Absolutely, and I have the texts, if you would like. I'd be glad to read them. I reached out to Counselor Nitzer and said, "When can we make this public?" And his statement was that we would not make this appointment public until the agenda deadline on Friday.
But there was a lot of, my point of asking the question is, there was plenty of time through this process, being privy to the information and being on the selection process, that should a person want to do that, Counselor Nitzer, I mean, I can ask you the same question. For me, I was fine with this. This is an employee that works for the council. This is an employee that is the watchdog. I will say, based on part of what impressed me so much about Shawna and the award that she has won, is she's not afraid to challenge anyone. It takes a lot of courage to look you in the face and say, "You know what? I have a relationship with you or you. You're doing this wrong. I'm sorry. Somebody lost their job. That's a bad deal, and it's a bad situation to be in." I wouldn't wish that upon anyone. She did it. She did it with dignity. She did it with integrity because it was the right thing to do. And for those reasons, I think that this is the perfect role for someone with that in mind, someone that is able to take this department to that next level. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and to have conversations over the last few days. I'm grateful for that and all of the questions that you asked. I know I asked you some tough ones, and she was able to answer them with dignity and grace. I'll remind this council, just recently, our very own city attorney had to recuse himself, and his office did the police contract. There's history of that. He had to completely do a separation and say, "You know what? My brother works for the police department. I cannot be involved in this any way, shape, or form." He recused himself, and he did that with integrity. His staff went on, negotiated it, and it is what it is. It's to that. There's a history of it. If we need to go outside, we can do that, too. I'm completely fine with that. When we talk about this auditing department, and I'll, Greg Nitzer, you can, Counselor Nitzer, you can talk about it in more detail. I haven't been on the audit committee for quite some time. However, I'm privy to watching what goes on. We audit everything. We go everywhere with it. The employees look at a handful of things. Having someone with the experience of knowing the system, boy, I'd be a little bit nervous if I were someone in the administration going, "She knows everything about everything. There is nothing that you can hide from her because she knows it. She knows how to get into the system." And I think that's a huge asset for us as we move forward. I want someone like that, that is willing to challenge and take this department to the next role. Welcome to the challenge, should this approve. Welcome to the challenge. It will be a challenge. And again, I just appreciate you reaching out and giving me the opportunity to get to know you a little bit better through this process.
Counselor Nitzer?
A couple of things I'd like to cover. First of all, unlike the mayor, we are a group of eight, which means that we have to come to some sort of a consensus without actually voting that we are going to bring somebody forward. As chair of the audit committee, I had a responsibility to deal with this personnel matter sensitively. I had to make sure that there was a consensus of the city council to bring this forward. If there wasn't, and it was released, it would be disclosed that this applicant had applied when she wasn't going to even have the opportunity to have a hearing. You don't do that to personnel. And so, I had to make sure that I had a consensus. And I also had to wait for an opinion from the attorneys before I could move forward. And then I got those six signatures, and then I was able to place it on the agenda, and I had to wait. And I said, "We're not going to release this until it goes on the agenda because once it is on the agenda, it is public. But until then, we are not going to do that because if for any reason we don't have a consensus, somebody backs out, we have to protect the candidate. I'm not going to let that slip, and I'm willing to take the-
I'm not going to let that slip, and I'm willing to take the fire for that if you want to call that lack of transparency or whatever else." I wasn't going to do that to an employee or a prospective employee. So that's the first thing. As far as the meeting that we had when we were hiring or when we were doing the interviews, everything that you're hearing about was discussed. We talked about it. I said in that room, "I want you all to know, this person is married to a city employee." And I told them who it was, and we had a discussion about that. After a vigorous discussion about it, we decided that the pros outweighed the cons and that it was manageable. And we all checked a box. We all had our own form that said "recommended," and we left, all very excited. We found our candidate. We knew about this. Wasn't a surprise. The other thing I'm going to say is, people are blowing parking way out of proportion. It's one piece of the police department. I don't know how many years it's been since we've even audited parking, to be honest with you. This is very manageable. That's the one issue you have to deal with. And as has been discussed, this is very, very routine. We have city employees throughout the city who have relatives who also work in the city, sometimes even over each other. It's manageable. It's been done. One other point, Rich Oxl came from finance. He was our first internal audit manager. One of the reasons he was so successful is because he came from finance. He had the relationships built. He knew the system. Everybody knows that. It's the same thing here. This is very manageable. We have an outstanding candidate.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the council? Counselor Breckie.
I want to talk a little bit about process and government structure. As you all know, I'm a stickler for that. And one of my concerns is that we have developed a sort of dysfunctional process in how we operate and how we address issues. But before I do that, I want to start by saying, you know, I have tremendous respect for each and every one of my fellow council members. And since I joined the council, it has been my dream and my goal to position myself on the council in such a way that I could work enthusiastically with each and every one of you on issues of joint passion and concern. But there's a process that we engage in that is really frustrating to me and is making it difficult for me to do that. And I want to talk about that process tonight. And that process is this: when an issue comes up and we discuss it, it just disappears. And there's a second discussion that takes place out of the public eye, and there's a minority group of us, and our thoughts and our participation in the discussion is just ignored or discarded. And that's what happened here, and I'm really frustrated about it, and that's why I'm going to talk about it tonight, because it keeps happening. So here's the process that we engage in. We had a meeting, you know, to discuss our candidate, and we have a right to have that meeting, and we had that meeting, and we discussed our candidate. And issues came up, and it was said in that meeting that we would have a second meeting. And I was trying to wrestle with those issues as that meeting was taking place. There were things that weren't setting well with me. It was not passing the gut test, and it turned out to be these conflicts of interest that are built in to this candidate. And I was still formulating that issue, and there were other concerns that, you know, were still, I was still just trying to wrestle with this person and some of the things that I was feeling about it. I never even got a chance, you know, to talk to my fellow council members about that because the next thing that happened was, you know, a series of emails, a phone, some phone calls, and all of a sudden, you know, I'm hearing that, you know, there's been a consensus of six, and this is going to be on, put on a special meeting. And so I'm going to talk right now about what my concerns were, and I'm frustrated that, because this isn't my first rodeo. I think I have good concerns, and I'm glad that the public's here because sometimes they agree with me. But my concerns are this: you know, I am concerned about the conflict of interest. I did raise it. I was the one that was wrestling with it, and I think there are two. There's two conflicts of interest. One, the fact that this employee has a spouse that's, you know, in one of the departments; and two, just an inherent conflict of interest in the fact that, you know, she's going to be reviewing a work in an environment that she existed in, that is stamped all over with her work product. That's a legitimate concern. Our Code of Ethics requires the council in all of its actions to hold themselves to the standard of appearance of impropriety, no appearance of impropriety. And it's a legitimate concern to say that, you know, an internal audit division, you know, should be at the highest level, you know, of indisputable objectivity. And so I think it's legit for me to have that concern, that, you know, having someone that's inside and has a husband, you know, it's going to create appearance of impropriety. And then the other thing is, you know, there's been talk about this conflict and how it's manageable, but this is a unique conflict. In the scenarios that have been tossed around, it's not been a husband-wife situation, and it's not been in a situation where the, one of the individuals in this position would be in an investigatory supervisory capacity over the situation. I mean, it's easier to remove, it's a second level of removal that's required for that, and it is going to be expensive to do that, to add that. But regardless of the conflicts, you know, I had to just go back through and put on my objective hat and separate myself from this terrific individual that's involved and just look at the very fundamentals. And when I looked at the fundamentals, what I saw was, yes, there's been a year-long process, almost two, you know, worked in reorganizing this division. But really, as far as going out for hire, we went out in three weeks in an internet search, and we came back with 15 applicants, none of which, including this applicant, had any supervisory experience or auditing experience. And we're hiring an internal investigative auditor. That's a big deal. And I understand that she's a capable person and that this is a career opportunity for her. There's no question that she's beyond qualified for the second position. She has all those qualifications, but those are two key skill sets. And so for me, what jumped out at me was not anything negative about this individual, but why did we have, what did we, what happened with our search that we got no candidates with any audit or supervisory experience? And again, as a former city employee who hired people, I immediately went down that path. Why aren't we recalibrating our search, figuring out how to get those candidates that have government, you know, accounting and auditing experience out of state governments and cities, you know, in a circumference? There's no reason why we couldn't re-target our audience and go out and try to get several candidates that had a raft of experience. And I, I mean, why wouldn't we go to North Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, do a four-state area, looking at state government auditing, you know, targeting state government legislative auditing offices and local governments? And so these are things I wanted to discuss with my fellow council members. Why wouldn't we do that first before we hired a really good candidate and gave her this career opportunity? Because, and another thing, another thing is, we don't have a lot of supervision over this thing because this thing has to kind of run by itself. And so you're putting someone in there that's missing two skill sets and expecting her to just do it all on her own. And I think that's kind of an unfair thing to do. So I'm glad today that I had a chance to tell you what my main concerns were. That's what they are. I think they were legitimate. I wished that we could, you know, have these discussions, and I didn't feel like this process is all done behind the scenes in a rapid-fire fashion that tries to leave the public out. And I know that may offend some of you, me saying that, but the fact of the matter is, you know, that's the message that was sent, that this was done. And then I get a call from Teresa Staley, and she's upset. She's extremely upset about the fact that this is going to be done at a 5:30 special meeting, and the public has no idea, you know, that this is going to happen. And she doesn't ask me permission to do things. Sometimes she tells me, and she told me she was going to do a robocall. And my response to that was, you know, I made an effort and contacted Greg without disclosing her confidences, and I said, you know, "Why don't we take the time to redefine our search, you know, go out for a second round of applications, and use this as an opportunity to build consensus on the council? Why are we going in, you know, without trying really hard to come up with an employee that's going to work for all of us, that we can all feel really good about?" And that basically was just summarily dismissed. I mean, I never even, the response I got was basically, it was philosophical, and, you know, "We've got the consensus, so this is over." So I'm here speaking out of frustration. I'm here speaking candidly. I'm probably making some council members very angry, but we have got to quit doing it this way. We have got to be able to hear the minority people on the council and to be able to use these things as opportunities to achieve consensus and to not just be told, you know, "This is what's going to happen, and your voice doesn't matter, and this is going to happen on a special meeting." And that, to me, that's a whole nother thing. It doesn't even, you know, a special meeting is supposed to be something special, a special reason for having a meeting. So since there just was one happened to be there, we decided to throw this on there. So, yeah, I've got problems with the transparency. I've got problems with the process, and I've got problems with the fact that we worked so hard to get this division turned right side back up, and then we're working so quickly, you know, to just put someone in without even acknowledging the fact that, you know, we've got candidates, a whole series of candidates, that didn't have the two skill sets that are most necessary for this position. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Counselor, is there any other discussion on this item?
In my opinion, there's two issues at hand here. One of them has to do with the qualification of this candidate. The other one has to do with the notification and the robocall that went out. And also, we're going to be talking about the press release that some of my colleagues put out today. The timeline for this was very problematic. Friday at 4 o'clock, we were, the public and the council was officially noticed that we have our candidate coming forth. We knew who it was. The Argus Leader, bless their hearts, they put an article out about this at Friday at 4 o'clock. Had it not been for that, the public wouldn't have known it unless they were going to go digging through the agenda, which most people don't do. And not to mention, it's a holiday weekend, of course, Easter. I was, I had asked Counselor Knightsert to slow down. I had made the request, and as Counselor Breckie said so very eloquently, we are just kind of told to hit the road. We got the votes we need. You don't matter. We're going to push this thing through. And so I thought to my, I said to Counselor Knightsert, I said, "You guys may be, in your minds, you think this is the right way to go, but I'm not sure the public's going to buy into that, and they have a right to know." And I thought to myself, "There's not time to send a postcard out." So I chose to do a robocall late Friday night. And by the way, the notice came out on Good Friday, speaking of holidays and putting business in the midst of our Easter holiday. And we, I let the citizens know that Tuesday tonight was the vote. It's like less than a four-day turnaround to notify the people that this is happening. This position, our internal audit position, is a very important position. It's put there to root out abuse, fraud, misappropriation of funds. I hold it very, in a very high level of importance. I wasn't here when they hired Rich Oxl. Yes, he may have come from finance. That was years ago. I had nothing to do with that, and neither do I have anything to do with the mayor's appointments because someone made reference that we didn't have an outcry when we hired another relative within the city employment. That's not within my authority, but this is a city council employee. This past, since this came out on Friday at 4:00 p.m., I have heard from citizens. I have heard from the people who are auditors within our community, there is a great concern about this, about how it's being handled. Again, it's about protecting the taxpayers. It's really, it's about the people. I'm very grateful that the conversation has ignited, and if I hadn't put that robocall out, and if the Argus Leader hadn't reported on that Friday night, we wouldn't be having, we wouldn't have had the kind of conversation that we're having right now. So again, my concerns was that there wasn't notification. We didn't have a chance to have input the way it was running, four-day window, as I said. And then we have this thing on a special meeting, special time, like it's some kind of urgent emergency to deal with this. And I, in my history of thinking about city council employees, I don't ever remember having, it was always a unanimous vote. I've asked some of our current employees, I've said, "How would you have felt you came on board and three of us voted against you?" Well, I would have felt horrible. I said to Counselor Knightsert at the end of last week, I said, "You better let this employee, this candidate," not employee yet, "let the candidate know that there's some concerns here. It's not going to be a slam dunk." He did, and the candidate came back and said, "I want it more than ever. I'm committed. I want to do this." And that's when I thought, "Okay, Shawna, she understands that there is resistance. She wanted to move forward with this." So that, I understand, and this is nothing against her integrity at all. I'm so glad we've reiterated that. This is an audit management supervisor position. Our candidate has no audit experience endorsements, no supervisory experience. Her husband is the city's parking manager, and he, do not minimize the importance that this man had. We dealt with him over the parking ramp issue when we had the multi-use parking ramp. Matt Nelson and Darren Ketchum were very, very instrumental in having that thing pass, and Counselor Knightsert was very instrumental in working with them, and Counselor Erickson was also very instrumental in working on the RFP for that. So there are great relationships happening already within the Nelson family and some of our council members. I think there is a conflict of interest. We have Mark Cotter is here. We have the fire chief coming. Shawna is embraced warmly by these departments. That's wonderful. That is not what I want to see in our independent auditor. We need somebody who's going to come in from the outside. We don't need somebody who's friendly or warmly embraced. We need an outside candidate who does not have any conflicts of interest. And to say that to the public, "Well, we're going to hire this person, and then if we need to do an audit on a certain department that they may have worked in, whether it's Public Works, the Fire Department, or her husband's Parking Department, well, we'll just be hiring I. Bailey to come in and handle that audit." To me, it doesn't even make sense. It's just like we're trying to make something fit. What is it they say, a round peg in a square hole? I mean, it's like, why would we even be going here? Because people on this council like Shawna so much. That's why we're going to hire her. Disappointed. I'm disappointed. I told Counselor Knightsert in an email, "I'm happy to share it with the public." I said, "I'm disappointed. I think this was a disrespectful move. We could have pulled back on this, and we could have searched for a candidate that we could have all embraced." And as Counselor Breckie said, we could have taken more than three weeks and gone out and found someone that we could all agree on. But they said, "No. We've got five votes, six votes, whatever. We're going to push forward anyway." I'm disappointed that we didn't, we're not looking for an independent candidate with great qualifications. I'm disappointed that we gave the public a four-day notification. It was rushed. Very disappointed. I'm disappointed that we're kind of watering down the importance of an audit division. And so, again, because I felt at And so, again, because I felt at, at, on Good Friday, when this came out, and I'm committed to letting the people know what's going on, and I've been doing that with this daily report. I have spent my own money to engage with people, whether it's Facebook, going to the Benson Flea Market. Our community is growing. We need to have connections as far as what's happening. I applaud the mayor for doing a lot of Facebook work, but we need to do even more. This is, this issue was coming out of nowhere. Four-day notice, some have mentioned, I met with a constituent before the meeting. They said, well, this doesn't apply to the citizens. This position shouldn't bother the citizens. It's your internal position. No. This is talking about going out and doing checks and balances and drilling into the departments within our city. Rose Grant, thank you for sitting on this committee. We have one outside citizen and some council members making the, the selection. The integrity needs to be, we need to raise the bar on it. Anyway, I, I'm hoping that we could go back and I won't be supporting this, this nominee. It's nothing that Greg Neitzert didn't know. But lastly, I, the robocall came up today. And yes, I did make that robocall. And yes, I did encourage people to call Counselor Neitzert because he and I were the ones who were dialoguing about the need for the citizens that they need to know what's going on. This isn't just about us on the council, it's about the community. So I wanted to read my robocall because it's come up and I don't know that the Argus had it in print. They did have, my colleagues, several media venues had my, my, the press conference or the press release about me today. So I'm going to read this. Hello, this is Teresa Staley. And by the way, I sent this across the city. I did not target Counselor Neitzert's district. I said, please read the Argus Leader online story, which is reporting on a concerning citizen audit issue. The audit department was created to detect and root out fraud and misuse of funds. An unqualified candidate with no audit experience will be voted on at the council meeting on Tuesday to manage and lead the audit department, which protects the citizens from fraud and mismanagement of funds. This candidate is also married to the city supervisor who pushed through the controversial downtown parking ramp. Not amp, ramp. Now, I, I'm saying this because I'm totally on the record having said this to Matt Nelson through, and our council, through that whole thing. It was a controversial parking ramp proposal and Matt was the supervisor who was pushing it through. It, to me, it's a huge conflict of interest with our candidate, having that relationship. Counselor Greg Neitzert is ramrodding this vote through Tuesday night at 5:30. Now, you may take issue, Teresa, why did you use the word, word ramrod? Well, what do you call that when it's, it's unleashed on Good Friday at four o'clock and you're voting on the next Tuesday at 5:30? To me, that was a word that was very descriptive. Call Greg Neitzert at 929-9118, which by the way, he identifies himself as his, a city counselor on that number, and tell him we need an independent qualified audit manager with no conflict of interest. Call the other council members as well. Thank you. Paid for by Teresa Staley. So I'm glad I did that. I'm glad that the public is aware that this is coming up. I, again, I would hope that we could go back and we could have found a candidate that we could all embrace because this is our candidate. It's, it's our department. It's, we don't have many employees here, but this, to me, was not the right fit.
Counselor Neitzert?
First of all, I, I would just, I, I would only just comment that I, I'm going to leave it to the public, both here and in the audience, to determine what, what they think about the robocall and whether they think that was a, a productive and a professional way to handle a personnel matter. Next, I, I do want to note that we have agendas that post every Friday for every council meeting. And until then, there's all kinds of items that have final action, like resolutions, that aren't out in the public. It happens every week. It gets published on Friday and we exceed state law in terms of public notice. It's there all weekend, comes up on Tuesday. So I, I guess if we want to use words like ramrod and jam down, then I, we must do that week after week after week after week. So I, I guess I would take issue with that. I, I do also want to talk about the special meeting issue. The timing just ended up working out in, in how we did the interviews, where we ended up having the discussions. And again, you have an entire council that has to deal with this. We're not just one person where the mayor might have more ability because it's one person that can make the decision. We have to figure out, we have to, we have to have these discussions because we can't vote on it, we can't do things in private. So we have to figure out which way we're going. The timing just worked out that we had two choices. We have a special meeting or we're ending up waiting until at least May 7th because that's the next regularly scheduled council meeting. We were going to have at least two people gone on May 7th. That gets us to May 14th. With the time we were having that discussion, you were talking about one month to possibly put somebody sitting in limbo. First of all, trying to keep it under wraps, but second of all, having somebody hanging out there for one month, waiting to find out whether or not they're ultimately going to get the job. And so my decision was, and I asked the city council and I got six signatures, that's a super majority. You normally need two signatures to get something on the agenda. Six. I asked them to put it on a special meeting to respect that timing because I wasn't going to make somebody wait for one month. Again, treating your personnel with professionalism. And so that was the judgment I made. And I got six signatures. And I want to point something else out. There's one other way to get something on a special meeting, and that's to ask the mayor to sign it. He might have signed it if I asked him. But I determined I was not going to do it that way. If I didn't have six signatures, this wasn't going to go forward. I wasn't sure if I was going to get six signatures, but I got six signatures. That's a pretty strong consensus. If you get six signatures to put something on the agenda, you probably should put it on the agenda because it's a pretty strong message of the city council that they want this to move forward. We vote on things all the time that don't have a unanimous approval. That's the way that the process worked. This was over and above. And I do want to say, deep down, really, you know, I, I don't know that this is as much about this candidate, although unfortunately, it has been deeply personalized. Really, as I've looked at it, and this is something I was talking about when we were talking about putting this on the agenda, what I really came to and realized is that this is really a philosophical discussion and a dispute over what the vision of internal audit should be. And I've talked to a lot of internal auditors. I spent an hour on the phone with the Department of Legislative Audit last week. Talked to the people that looked into the Phillips and the Falls issue. There's one camp that believes that the role of internal audit, first and foremost, is that you're supposed to be digging and looking for fraud and going in with guns blazing. And there is another camp, and by the way, nobody, nobody who is an auditor will tell you that. Call the Department of Legislative Audit and ask them if that is a productive way to run an internal audit division. Read Lawrence Sawyer, who is referred to as the father of internal auditing. See if he says that's a productive way to run an internal audit. Look at the IAA president and CEO. Look at the IAA guidance. All of them say, an effective internal audit builds relationships and works productively with management. Because you get cooperation and then they will ask you in and they will want you to come and help them because they trust you and you have a rapport with them. If your internal audit is detecting, you have failed. Your organization has failed. Prevention is what you want first. You get prevention by working collaboratively with management to make sure internal controls are in place. And the only way you do that is you have a productive, working relationship. You don't go in with a conspiratorial, conspiratorial attitude, with a chip on your shoulder, assuming that there must be fraud to find. And if we, if we do an audit, we don't, and we don't find fraud, we didn't look hard enough. Now, if you find indications of it, it has to be dealt with and they will. But you ask any of those auditors and they will tell you, you don't go in looking for fraud in audits. You don't go in with that sort of an attitude. Internal audit is internal. They have to walk a fine line. They have to be independent and you do that with structure. That's why they're hired and fired by the city council. So if our internal audits, our internal auditors find issues, they can report it without having to worry that the executive, a mayor in this case, could terminate them. And they have to be objective. And that's a state of mind and that's something you have to work on and that's something that has to be disclosed. But at the end of the day, every internal audit works for the organization. In the internal audit profession, they call it schizophrenia, that I, I have to be independent, but I work for the organization. There's always a tension there. They have to figure out how to be independent. And the way in which you do that is you set up the structure and you hire somebody who has the ethics and then you also have the IAA standards that we follow. So really, that's what it comes down to and that's where I thought we were at, at an impasse. I was not willing to say, I am not going to move forward with an otherwise qualified candidate because they're a city employee. I've talked to other auditors, talked to the DLA, looked at the literature. It's not atypical. People come from management, go over audit all the time. In fact, it's preferable. Institutional knowledge. Talked to the state. They do it. You want to know another secret? The head of the internal audit division for the state, his wife works for state government in a high-level position. The chief internal auditor for the state. They knew that going in. And so what do they do? He has to recuse himself. There are auditors at the DLA who have relatives or spouses that work for the state. And in that case, they have to recuse themselves. They disclose it, they deal with it. I asked him point blank, would you disqualify a candidate because they work for the state? Absolutely not. In fact, it's really a major upside. They've got institutional knowledge. Would you disqualify a candidate because they were married to somebody that worked for the state? Nope. We have them here. My boss is married to somebody that works for the state, the head of internal audit. Finally, the lesson of Phillips to the Falls, I keep hearing about that. I've read that audit many times. I talked to them, the people that did it. The lesson of Phillips to the Falls was not, we need an internal audit division to root out fraud, waste, and abuse. That was not the lesson. The lesson was, an organization this big needs an internal audit division to make sure that internal controls are in place. That was the lesson. The lesson was, we need to have an internal audit division that will assist management with making sure that controls are in place so this sort of thing, hopefully, never happens again. The lesson was, internal controls were not in place and they listed them out and you know what? They were implemented. Either management implemented, the administration, or the city council did. There's a lot of things in place now that were not in place at the time. At the time, one director could sign off on change orders and contracts. One director. Public Works signed it, done. It's no longer the case. Change orders contracts have to go through a whole system of approvals. Multiple departments have to sign off on it. At the time, we weren't getting monthly financial reports. Now we get those. We weren't seeing things like carryovers, encumbrances, and all of those things. Now we have a real-time look at it. Internal controls were put in place. Talk to people who are internal auditors. You need an effective, working relationship with management. And I will tell you, if our internal audit is going to have the attitude that we're going to go in looking for fraud with a chip on our shoulder, it is going to be doomed to failure. We have to have somebody who has demonstrated they have good working relationships with management, but when necessary, they will hold them accountable. This person has already done that and she works for management. She could be terminated. Now she's going to go over to, to our division where they won't be able to terminate her. She's stepping out of civil service. She's going over and working for us. So that, I, that's where I really think this lands. This is really a philosophical debate. And I'm telling you, internal audit is there to assist management and make it be better. And that was one of the things that I loved about what she talked about. That was part of her vision. How do we make it more visible and impactful? Internal audit is, is, is really just not, not seen. The best-case scenario that we can have is we can have the management respect our internal auditor, respect her capabilities, respect that she's firm, but she's fair, and say, come in and help us improve so that we can prevent, not detect. As the DLA, DLA says, if you're detecting, it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Staley?
Last fall, the municipal, the municipal league had a convention here in Sioux Falls and they were talking about municipal fraud. And they were talking about a community, I don't have the name of it, but where the, they, they, one of the employees embezzled hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they're talking about how one of the perpetuators of that is that, the, when you get relationships that are too friendly, because it's very hard to challenge your friends. And now we're saying that Shauna's got that ability to challenge her friends and the coworkers. That's not what they were telling us at the municipal league. I do think that the purpose of this audit was not, I don't think we have an audit department to help management. And, and I've heard this through the years, well, we've got to have a good relationship with the, the finance department or they won't give us information. Oh, you better be nice to these department heads or they, they just won't work with you. I'm like, forget this. They work for the citizens. You better darn well give us that information when we ask for it. We shouldn't have to pat you on the head and shake your hand and be your, your friend. Not that we don't want to have a regard for people, but we're working for the citizens here. This isn't our own little, our own little company. So once again, I think the citizens, for the, to protect the integrity, I, I have yet to hear from a citizen I've talked with, I know some of the Shauna's friends are here. We've got, as I said, Public Works. But when I'm telling this story to the public, they ain't buying it. They're saying, we need to have somebody in this position who's neutral, who comes out of city government and comes in with, with qualifications. And Counselor Neitzert's talking about these state employees. We don't have names with them. Okay? So I don't, but I will tell you, I also got, I've been contacted by, I'll call the, we'll keep my people anonymous as well, people who are very concerned, who are auditors in our community, who are saying, this isn't smelling right. We can have, we can ask for more. It's nothing against Shauna. And I, I'm just going to tell you personally, I think Shauna has friends here. I think that there was a decision made that Shauna would be a good person to have within our environment on city council and we're going to make this work. And again, that's where we really weren't involved in, I wasn't involved in, first of all, the special meeting. I was one of the two that didn't sign off. So I would have wanted to give a little more longitude to the, to the discussion. And, and again, I just think, I'm so glad we're having this discussion because at the end of the day, it's not against Shauna, but it is saying, we need somebody independent, we need a qualified auditor, and we need someone who doesn't have so many conflicts of interest surrounding their, their essence within city government.
Counselor Neitzert?
For what it's worth, I, I think it was during the job posting, it might have been open at the time, I think. I, I happened to be at the Core Transit meeting room and I, I met a young lady and, and we had a conversation about audit and I, honestly, I, I didn't remember the, the Gene Fulenkamp Award. Until then, I don't think I had ever, ever talked to her, to be honest with you. And so we just had a little conversation, you know, a little small talk and that was the end of that. And then when the job posting was, I think, a day away from closing, I, I got an email from a city employee saying, could, could I ask you some questions about, about this position? And I thought, well, I don't, you know, I, I better check on this because I, I don't hire people every day. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. And so I, I reached out and I found out, sure, you can answer questions of anybody that asks you, just don't interview them. Just don't ask them questions. Okay. So I met with her real quick. She asked some good questions and I answered it and, and that was the end of that. And I didn't know whether she would apply or not. And I think I found out that, and that was, I think, on, it was on the last day, on a Friday. And I found out on Monday that, that she'd applied when I saw the list. So the intimation or the assertion that there's some personal relationship or something underhanded going on, I, it's, that, it's just not true. The other thing I do want to throw out, this will be my final. to throw out, this will be my final point. The taxpayers are protected when you have an internal audit. Internal audit really has three customers. The first is the board, which in our case is the city council. The second is management, and the third is the customers. In our particular case, the customer is a taxpayer. As, as, internal audit helps management be better and make sure you have the controls in place. You don't have frauds happen, which means that you don't have breaches, and you don't lose money, and you don't have humongous embezzlements. Because when we do have breaches and we lose a bunch of money, who's on the hook? The taxpayer. They serve everybody. So by them helping to help serve and be a consultant to management to make sure internal controls are in place, they serve the taxpayer. It's not an us versus them item, unless you make it so. But it's not.
Thank you. Counsel?
And I'm in-
I'd like to have this be the last argument, then. I'm going to call for a vote on this.
Well, Councilor Nicer's had a chance to have several responses.
That's why I gave you the floor, Counsel.
But I want to say, my father worked for a bank, and the audit department used to come in and audit them. They weren't friendly with them. They didn't have a warm relationship. There was a little bit of a fear there, that you better get everything together, because they're coming in. Same thing if you get audited by the IRS. I mean, it's, we don't say, "Well, you know, IRS agency, be real, have a cozy relationship with the citizens so that, you know, they'll give you more information." No, that's not how, how the audit world works. So, again, we're setting a precedence here. Councilor Nicer has just said this, that they're there to help management. Apparently, this is his, his vision of what the audit department is. I, I've felt since Phillips to the Falls, the audit department is there as a watchdog for the citizens, is a checks and balance. It is saying, "We are going to be working to prevent fraud, abuse of funds, mismanagement of funds." So I think you're right. There is a philosophical difference, and that's maybe why this candidate is, is, is working for you. But again, I was hoping we could have something with more of a, of a qualification and independent nature.
Councilor Breckie.
I'll be brief. But I did want to address a couple of things that Councilmember Nicer raised. You know, I think quite frankly, it's both. The role of the independent auditor is much similar to the role of an internal affairs division in a police department. It can be your worst enemy and your best friend. When they serve to actually show that you're doing things right, and to help you do things right, they're your best friend. But when they find things that they need to deal with, they're your, they're your worst fear. And that's what I view the role as. So I don't really think there is, that this debate really is that much about philosophical differences, because I think the two are reconcilable, the two philosophies. And that's, you know, that is how they are run. But I would say, I do think it is about, for me at least, it's certainly about just core qualifications and trying to hurry up the process when there was no reason to. I would really have liked to have taken the time to make this an opportunity to build consensus among the council. And I'm disappointed that we are at such a place that we are unable to do that, even on an issue of hiring an employee. And I hope that you will take to heart the things that I said today, because I said them in the best interest of just raising the issue so that we could have those discussions for the future, that we might function better and work together better. And for me, part of that would have been taking that extra month to actually talk through it and see if this is really the direction we want to go. Part of it has to be with hurrying things up all the time. We're government, it's okay for government to move slowly. I don't think we have to always rush things. And I feel like that is one of the fatal flaws in this whole situation, is how we, all of a sudden at the last minute, we just wanted to hurry things through. And I really wish we would have taken that extra time, because I know I, if I could have, you know, had those discussions, you know, maybe I would have changed my thoughts. But not being able to have them just felt like a flaw in the process. And I do think that one of the things that was missing is, it seems to be with the council, when we are very far apart on things, we just stop talking altogether, and it happens really fast. And I would just suggest that when you are far apart, that's exactly when you should be talking. And those are words that I heard from a speaker, a senior analyst from CNN, describing the policy problems with the federal government. He said, "They just quit talking because they say they're so far apart. That's exactly when you should be talking." And I would, I would say that on a go-forward basis. I hope we can do that together. We can talk instead of just stop and move forward. Because I think if we can reach that place, where we can talk about things, that will be what's ultimately best for the city, the city council, you know, in this case, the city auditing division. I think that was what was missing in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counsel, I'd like to call for a vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Staley?
No.
Breckie?
No.
All right, that item passes five to three. Congratulations. Shauna, any new business councilors? Move to adjourn? Okay. Move to adjourn by Starr, seconded by Selberg. All who's in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned. Have a good night.